Let's the air.
Yes, I move that council certify the closed session just concluded. Nothing was discussed except the matter of matters specifically identified in the motion to convene in closed session and lawfully permitted to be discussed on the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Dyke.
Aye.
Councilmember Olinger.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yow.
Aye.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our August the 12th, 2025 regular council meeting. Pledge of Legion, Mr. Ramirez.
Yes. Pledge of Legion, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda this evening is establishment of a job description for the junior system administrator, purchase of police vehicles, acceptance of grant funds from the Virginia State Police Heat Program, approval of water services agreement, resolution number R 2025-16, designating October 20th through 26th, 2025, as Culpeper Minutemen Week, acceptance of grant funds from Virginia Commission of the Arts, purchase of tourism replacement vehicle unit number 109, FY26 budget transfer for state tourism co-branding takeover, resolution adopting the 2025 personal property tax relief rate, treasures reports, and minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right. Special items of recognition, Culpeper Police Department's lifesaving awards presentation. Chief Sello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight I have the honor of recognizing some police officers and some communication officers for their heroic and lifesaving efforts in the town of Culpeper within the past several months. I think we could bestow the greatest honor of a police officer and a dispatcher is saving someone's life. I think all the medals of valor and heroism all go a long ways, but if you could directly have the impact of saving someone else's life, I think that's probably the highest honor can be bestowed on any given officer or dispatcher at any given time. So tonight is a special night. To recognize a special night, I want to recognize the officers and their families and support systems and their fellow officers here supporting them for their important recognition. So at this time, I'd like to do the honor of calling up Officer, Master Police Officer Nicholas Erosus, Dispatch Communication Officer Taylor Ann Muller, standing to my right, and also Master Police Officer Alfred Cooper, who is not here, he's out sick. So we have two incidents we're going to present awards to, and then after I read that, I'm going to ask the mayor and the town management, Mr. Havley, to bring the awards over and present the awards to the officer and to the dispatcher after I finish reading. On February 24th, 2025, at approximately 6:25 in the morning, Officer Erosus, well, first of all, 911 call came into our Culpeper Communication Center. At that time, our Communications Officer Taylor Ann Muller, standing to my right, took that call. The call came in for a call at 15487 Bragg's Corner Road for a report of auto accident with injury. Communications Officer Muller stayed calm throughout the call, provided proper direction, and actually changed the nature of the call to make sure she knew the nature of the call and knew that someone's life was in jeopardy, and changed the nature of the call to the officer so the officer get there as quickly as possible. Without doing that, that life might not have been saved. So I will give credit to Ms. Muller for changing that call and making sure those officers get there. We also, we tend to not forget or forget our dispatchers and our communications officers. They are the first first responder. They are the tip of the sword for us and provide those resources for us and gets us to the call as safely as we can and as quickly as we can. Once that nature code was called and Ms. Muller got her officers to the scene, they learned that there was not an auto accident, however, an employee had somehow gotten his arm stuck in a piece of heavy machinery, a forklift. The patient was bleeding profusely from his forearm and appeared to be losing his left arm, and his arm appeared to be becoming detached. Seeing the above information, Officer Erosus quickly applied a department-issued tourniquet to the upper-left arm of the patient, which helped control the bleeding until more advanced lifesaving measures arrived, a medic unit and a helicopter. Computer-aided dispatch notes show that Officer Erosus arrived on the scene at 6:30. Dispatcher Muller logged in at 6:33 in the CAD notes to reflect the tourniquet was applied. Three minutes. Those three minutes were valuable. During these lifesaving awards, we just don't take the face of the report, the face of the officer into account. We actually interview the medical professionals that's on scene, ER doctors, to make sure that these are truly lifesaving events, and we did talk to the medical professionals on the scene, and those three minutes mattered. Master Police Officer Cooper assisted with lifesaving act, and then knowing that EMS would be arriving, took it upon himself to move all the law enforcement vehicles so that the scene could be easily accessible. The quick actions of Officer Erosus could not only have saved, not only saved the patient's arm, but also his life, according to medical professionals. Officer Erosus should be commended for the quick actions along with Communications Officer Taylor Ann Muller and Master Police Officer Al Cooper for saving the lives of this individual. Law enforcement officers only receive basic training related to such type of trauma calls. Yet Officer Erosus was able to rely on his training and received to properly apply the tourniquet to prolong the life of the arm and the person. Without saying anymore, I'd like to congratulate Officer, newly promoted Master Police Officer Nicholas Erosus, Communications Officer Taylor Muller, and Master Police Officer Alfred Cooper for their lifesaving award according to department policies and procedures. So. So at this time, I ask the Mr. Mayor, the Mr. Manager, come present the lifesaving award and uniform ribbon to the officer and the communications officer. And I'd also like to recognize Captain Deal with Culpeper County Sheriff's Office, who is Ms. Muller's supervisor, is also present. He has something else to put on his uniform now. Our next event, I'd like to call up Master Police Officer David Cole, Officer Zach Waddes, Officer Meadows, and Dispatcher Erica Preston. You guys can flank wherever you want to flank. On May 14th, 2025, a 911 call came into our Culpeper County Joint Communication Center. Communication Officer Erica Preston took that call. It was a person, elderly person choking. The person was unconscious and unresponsive. Due to quick actions and the training of Communications Officer Preston, they made sure that the family maintained calmness and provided critical instruction to, well, the family members to start CPR on the person that was in crisis. Without that, and those minutes till our officers got there, we're not quite sure if talking to medical professionals, if the life could have been saved without those instructions that the communications officer gave to the family member to provide CPR and chest compressions more specifically to the person that was in trouble. Master Police Officer Cole, Officer Meadows, were dispatched to call along lay with Officer Waddes for the possible choking victim at their, at the home. A 73-year-old male was suffering from what appeared to be a choking incident. He was unconscious as a result of the choking incident and unresponsive. As mentioned before, the family member was currently doing chest compressions for several minutes when the officers arrived. Officer Meadows took over the CPR process from the family member. Master Police Officer David Cole began extracting the blockage from the victim's throat, which was visible and could be felt with a finger sweep in the victim's mouth. A piece of steak was removed from the victim's throat, opening his airway. Officer Waddes arrived on the scene and relieved Officer Meadows in the CPR process. As we know, CPR is a very tiring process, and we're trained to take over when fresh bodies arrive. Master Police Officer Cole continued doing finger sweeps as the man kept gagging on fluids. Company 11 arrived on the scene and took over CPR process until the victim regained consciousness. He was taken to the hospital for further treatment and observation. I will tell you, we also spoke to the medical professionals on scene and ER that without the quick actions of Ms. Preston and these officers, the outcome would not have been a success. The victim had a full recovery and is doing well today. His family was thankful for the quick officer response and the communications officer's instructions during the 911 call and the lifesaving measures performed. Without these measures, it could have been a much different outcome. So I'd like to congratulate and present Master Police Officer David Cole, Officer Zach Waddes, Officer Bradley Meadows, and Communications Officer Erica Preston with the Culpeper Police Department lifesaving award. Congratulations. So for council members that don't know, I would tell you what comes in as a medal for the audience to see. They also, this represents a lifesaving medal that they will wear on their uniform or above their name tag. So this will always be commemorated as the officer saving a life. So if you see an officer wearing this uniform ribbon, you know what it means. So congratulations again, and thank you for being Culpeper Police Department's best, and thank you for being the town's best. Thank you again. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations to all of y'all. Keep up the good work. All right. Public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for town citizens, visitors, and groups to speak or bring to our attention any government-related issues. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Roots of a question has a spokesperson. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Come on to the podium.
Let me make sure I have one in the center. There we go. That will help. Good evening. Sarah Parmally, representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. Dominion Energy is forecasting that it will cost $100 billion for the new infrastructure to bring on eight gigawatts of new electricity by 2039. However, this is only the tip of the iceberg as there are more than 40 gigawatts of additional demand from new data centers that will also need to come online. That is roughly the equivalent of 40 new nuclear reactors worth of electricity that will need to be built and distributed almost entirely to meet the needs of one industry. For reference, the North Anna Power Station, which has two nuclear reactors, currently produces around 17% of Virginia's power. Under Dominion's 50-year-old rate structure, much of the cost of new transmission lines and power plants are paid for by residential and commercial customers who, whose energy usage is not increasing. Everyone pays when a new transmission line is, even though new transmission lines are often only needed to serve a single data center customer, like the Marvell Data Center in Stevensburg. This is a matter of equity, as ratepayers of Virginia are being forced to subsidize some of the wealthiest industries in the world by paying for their infrastructure. Right now, the Virginia State Corporation Commission is conducting its biannual review of Dominion Energy's rates for generation, transmission, and distribution services. This will have a massive impact on how much we pay for power in the foreseeable future. Here is what PEC is asking of the SEC. We ask the SAC to require transmission and distribution infrastructure costs be more fairly allocated to the data center customers that are driving the need for this. We ask that the SEC modify the way electrical generation expenses are recovered from customers so that data centers have, that the data centers that are increasing the baseload are responsible for their share of the burden. We ask the SEC to adopt more stringent consumer protections, including requiring data centers to make minimum financial commitments and agree to longer contract terms before receiving electric service. We have already seen states like Ohio and Texas adopt these common sense ratepayer protections, and Virginia, as the largest data center market in the world, should really already have them, but we would like them to follow suit now. Are asked to you, the public comment period for Dominion's rate case is currently open until August 26th. There will also be an opportunity to provide oral testimony if desired on September 2nd. I ask that you, as members of the town council and anyone else who gets a power bill, write to the State Corporation Commission asking for these common sense measures to be enacted. I'm happy to provide additional information for anyone who would like it, and there are also resources on PEC's website, including a form letter. Regardless of whether or not you support any of the data centers that have been approved in Culpeper, I hope you can all agree that these are private, for-profit entities, and it is unfair to ask Culpeper residents and local businesses to shield these data center companies, which are among the wealthiest in the world, from the cost of doing business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Reverend Carmichael, 1021 Lakeviewland Drive. Congratulations on your mayorship, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm here tonight on behalf of my committee. We have election coming up this year, and four years ago, the voters had spoken, and this year we have a clear choice for the voters here in the town of Culpeper. Either we can move, keep moving the town forward, or we can go back. We can elect Mr. Russell, who will slice all programs in this town for our children. He repeatedly told me four years ago that if he ever had a chance, he would slam the door on all of our children here in town. So we asking the voters, we in the process of knocking on doors, to reject his bid once again this year, because we feel that he would be very, very unfit for this town on behalf of all of our children. I'd like to let the guests, the voters know, a vote has consequences. When you go in the boot and vote, we asking that you vote for your children, the children here in town of Culpeper, because we can still see the children, because Mr. Russell riding on the streets, almost getting hit with cars and trucks because of his vote. So we asking the voters in November, not in November when they start voting, to come out and reject his bid once again. A vote is very powerful, so we want to send Mr. Russell a vote that he's not fit for our children here in the town of Culpeper. So when you come out and vote, think about the children here in town. The late John Lewis said, "When you found trouble, get in some good trouble." And we feel that this is good trouble for the voters here in town, because we want the voters to know that we don't take our children for granted. We think Jamie, for everything she, Jamie, Councilwoman Jamie, and the rest of y'all, for all y'all do for our children. We can't afford to have Mr. Russell to take charge and start cutting the budget here in town, parks and wrecks, and everything else in this town for our children. So when you have a vote, be powerful, be brave with your vote. Let this man know he's just very unfit for the town of Culpeper, for mayorship. And a vote had consequences, so we, once again, process of knocking on doors, talking to the parents here, Republican parents, Democrat parents, others that have children here in the town, and plus regular voters. Be powerful with your vote this year. Just send a message to Mr. Russell, he very unfit for our children in town. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, since I was mentioned, I'd like to respond. Okay? Thank you. I'd invite the gentleman to come to my boxing club for at-risk youth. Anytime you want to come.
Excuse me, John, that's not in Robert's rules of order.
No.
Well, electioneering is not part of election rules of order either, Robert's rules of order, so.
It's open.
It's electioneering.
It's open public forum.
All right, we'll shut it down right now. Shut it down. Shut it down. All right. Let's the air.
I move that council reappoint John Surio to the planning commission for a new four-year term beginning September the 1st, 2025, and expiring on August the 31st, 2029.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Potential item for discussion at next interaction committee meeting. Anyone want to add or delete anything?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to add or delete anything, but I'd like to talk about the process. Since we've started this, sort of resurrecting the, the town and county interaction committees, I think we're doing it a little bit backwards here. And I had a different understanding when we first started. Items on the, on the regular council meeting end here, they don't start here normally. Everything we work on, on this agenda, started at committee, and I think the same should be done for any conversation we might have to have with the county. What I thought was going to happen, and what I would propose, is that any member on any committee can bring up a topic to discuss with, with the county. And then that committee then, like every other thing that starts at the committee, has a chance to kind of flesh it out, exactly what is it anybody wants to talk about and, you know, and then, and then move that forward. So at that point, you have at least four people of consensus, and it can just appear on the agenda. And then we already know ahead of time, the rest of us will know ahead of time, here's the item that that particular committee brought forward, and so we have some time to even think about it, as opposed to just at the end of the meeting here, you know, Mr. Short, no, sorry. Someone just says, hey, I want to talk about this, and then we're all sitting here trying to figure out, is it a good idea, a bad idea? So I'm just saying that as we move forward, if I can just repeat myself again, any member in any committee, because if it's going to have to do with the county, I don't think, I think it might be a problem to try to match up what specific committee that topic, you know, would fall under, so it really shouldn't matter. And then you have four people that can kick it around and then move it up the, up the chain, and it ends up here.
Out of question.
Anybody else?
No question.
You finished?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Terrifying question, so are you saying that, so are you saying that, so it'd be like a standing item on each committee agenda like it is here?
No. No, I think it would only be a standing item on the, on the regular council meeting, but at the, like anything else that is added on the, at the committee level. You add it at the beginning of the agenda, so I'd like to discuss an item, you know, for town, county interaction committee. The chairman says, okay, you vote on the agenda, a change, and then you have a discussion on it. It's like anything else that's added at the committee level.
I hear what you're saying. I think it would make sense, though, to have it like this on the committee meeting, so that it's not, it doesn't have to be added to every time that someone has an agenda.
Yes, because it's not, it's not a regular thing. It's a rare occasion that we would talk with the county. So it wouldn't be any different than, you know, than the way we do it now. If it's, you know, if it's not on the committee agenda already, any member of the council can add an item or request to add an item.
If it's voted on to be added on the agenda.
Well, yeah, I mean, at the very beginning, when you ask for, you know, any changes to the agenda.
Yeah, so it's potential for it to not be added as well.
Excuse me?
There's potential for it to not be added if it doesn't pass the vote to add it on the agenda.
Well, yeah, like any item on the agenda has to be voted on, but has anybody ever voted no? I mean, it's just a discussion, all right? I just think it gives it a little bit more substance if there's at least four people that have discussed it, moved it forward, and then we see it on the agenda, we're all prepared, you know, for it to, to be on the agenda.
All right. Janie?
So you're saying not, even though you know you want to bring that up at a committee meeting, so you're saying do this on the fly versus asking for it to be on the agenda so that everybody knows that they want to show up and discuss it there?
No.
Sorry.
No, no. Like, it's just, it's no different than how we do it now. Start the committee, call the committee to order, any changes to the agenda? Yes. I assume, you know, I want to have a discussion, or I want interaction committee to talk about item X or whatever, and then you vote on that, that item being added to that committee's agenda, and then when you get through, you talk about it.
So even though you, you know you want to bring it up.
Well.
Don't do it in advance so that, other than the four people on that particular committee, whatever committee it is.
Okay, well, okay, if you want to.
You say.
I know, I mean, there's, actually, there's two ways at the committee, and you could, at the, at the actual meeting, you can ask to have an item added, or you can get ahold of the chairperson and say, I'd like to have this, not added, but I want to, it's a request from a member to have a discussion about something. That's usually how it shows up, too. You can't just add anything on there, but it usually says on that, on their.
Items referred by council members.
Right, item referred, and then it still has to be voted on, whether it's added or not.
Or the chair could just have a standing, any discussion for anyone, anything anyone wants to discuss to go to.
That's, that's the standard now. Anybody can bring up.
Right, anybody.
An item to a committee.
I think the, the reason why I wanted to spin the town and county interaction committee back up was really to establish that relationship with the board of supervisors. I think there's a great connection between town staff and county staff. I know we each individually probably are meeting with board of supervisors, you know, on separate topics, but it really was to establish that relationship between the two governing bodies, so that when we get to a point where we have an issue, we have communications and relationships in place, so we can spend time tackling the problem.
Right, I don't think.
I do see what you're saying about trying to bring some order into it. I, I would hope that any member of council who wants to bring a topic to that, to that committee is able to, and I, you know, I hate for a committee to, you know, refuse a member of council and reprimand that discussion.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah, but I do see that we do need some, like, we wouldn't want someone in the future to take advantage of that interaction committee, right, with their own agenda or whatever, so I get that.
Well, going back historically, at least 30 years now, familiar with, they only met when one body or the other had something to bring to the other body.
Sure.
You know, you just didn't sit around once a month, drink coffee and spitball stuff, you know. If you're going to bring something to the county, I think we would have to agree as a body, what is it we want to talk about? And then, you know, whatever action is going to be taken, it shouldn't be a surprise, we shouldn't find out after the meeting by interaction that, oh, suddenly, you know, you've talked about something or promised something, or whatever the case may be.
I've had a lot of good things coming out of sharing a cup of coffee, but.
Well.
And I'd like to see that the town-county interaction is recurring, not just whenever there's a problem. I'd like to see it at least quarterly to get together and talk through things.
Yeah, well.
There's all kinds of stuff, you know, in the public domain happening, and all kinds of conversations happening, and I just think that that would, it would be good for Culpeper, you know, we were working together and communicating.
Yeah, well, it would be, I would be opposed to that, because now you've got three people not even a quorum of council meeting, and nobody knows what they're talking about.
Well, I think to your point, which we all agree with, I think, what you're saying, it sounds like it would actually increase councils' input into what's going on in the town, to the interaction committee, if there were, if we were having this, this agenda item, which is discussing anything that we. this, this agenda item, which is discussing anything that we want to go, that we want to be discussed at that level at every committee meeting, then you have more opportunity to voice concerns that you want to bring to, the interaction committee would add another layer, it'd be like, okay, we're discussing it in a committee, then it has to go to full council, and then it has to go to the interaction committee, but I do think it would actually increase.
Right.
Our, each person here.
Case in point is, we, well, as of last month, we, we agreed to have a meeting to talk about the status of the courthouse plan. When, when is that meeting scheduled?
That meeting is scheduled for the twenty-sixth of September.
Of September.
Um, it's just, it's just recently been decided. I actually just had a chance to get it on there.
John?
All right, and so the.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I wanted to make my, my point here.
Is there a problem, like, is there a problem? Has you guys been meeting for coffee and not having any substantive discussions, or?
No, they haven't.
I mean, is this, like, me, you guys are just having a meeting to have a meeting, or, or, like, I'm trying to figure out, like, what the problem is that we have to change anything, if it's working, then good, if it's not working, then yes, but I don't hear any substantive not working.
I think what I'm hearing from the pronostics is that it's not working.
I wouldn't say it's working, I think it's a simple process. I just think we should have more discussion amongst ourselves before we go to, uh, meet with the county, because if you're just going to have for coffee, what's the point? I mean, that hasn't happened. I mean, I mean, one-on-one, I know, we have.
What is, discussions we've been having with the county has been real well.
I, I understand that, it's just that I, I think it's a little awkward that something comes up at the end of a regular meeting, and by then, we should have, all right, let me finish the point I want time to make. So the, the last meeting last month, it was to get an update on, on the courthouse plan. If I would have had more time to think about it, I would have added that, not just to get an update, but have they considered the impact that courthouse would have on the town in terms, in terms of the traffic, I mean, a larger campus is going to have potentially a negative impact on the town, so something more specific, just don't give us an update. I think we want to know a little bit more, or have more interaction than just that. I just think it ought to be done like all the other stuff. Starts at committee, and it goes to council. That's all I'm asking, is like, stay, you know, use, you know, use the system that we're using when it comes to interaction.
Janie?
I'm okay with the committee level, but if it, if I am not planning to, which is not like me, not planning to go to that committee meeting, and if somebody asks to have it added, then I'm not part of the conversation.
No, but at least you'll, at least you'll have a consensus, as opposed to just now with, like, one person says, hey, I want to have a discussion about this, and then we've got, like, just a couple of minutes here to kind of hash it out.
I agree that it should be on the committee.
Right.
But if you just do it ad hoc.
Well, it's still going to come to full council.
That's right, I mean, committee says, okay, it's a good idea, let's go talk about it, and then it goes on the agenda, and then you see it.
And then we can talk about it here at the regular.
No, right, yeah, and then, then we do like any other.
It's more fleshed out.
Instead of at the other committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure it's broken, Mr. Amicas, but I'm, I'm fine with if we want.
I didn't say it was broken.
To want to move topics, you know, through a committee and get consensus from the others, I'm.
I'm just looking for consistency in our process.
It is an interesting forum, right? It's a, it's a discussion forum, there's no decisions that come out of that. It is purely informing, you know, either side to make sure, you know, we're aware of what's going on at that level. And I think that this is just the first conversation about the courthouse, that's a multi-year process, right? So we'll definitely have follow-up meetings where there is more detail. The county is still trying to grapple with, you know, some of the specifics right now.
But also, there's a backside to that, is that you have a meeting, we don't get a report, there aren't any minutes, we don't know what was said, so there's only three of us that really have an understanding of what happened at that meeting, at least going into it, if we knew what the topic was going to be about.
Like, to your point, I see, we have lots of good conversation at committee, right? So if there's something that came up at committee, and we were like, hey, like, let's have this discussion about this thing, that I do want to go to the county, whatever that may be, then the committee is having a discussion, everyone's involved, and we're all aware of what's going on there, and then it comes here and goes there. So I, I see it as, as an ability to have increased transparency and input and insight from all council. And you're right, there's things that may go on at the interaction committee that if they're, if we're not discussing them at committee, I may, I may not be aware of where everyone's, you know, at least on the committee stands on it, so I think it may add an extra layer, but I think it also increases transparency and getting input from everyone on council, if it's going to go to the county, not just for that, but really anything. But I think we have good conversations at committee level, and, you know. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I think that it's a valid point. And to your point, Janie, I, I would just prefer it to be like a standing item, or is there anything anyone, a committee wants to talk about now to go to council, or go to county, the interaction committee? Yes or no?
I mean, at the committee level.
At the committee level, right. Like what we do here right now, but at committee level.
That would work.
And that way, it doesn't have to be added every single time.
Right, that would work.
An agenda item.
Yeah, so the way it is now, except at the committee level.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So if you have.
Go ahead, Janie.
So if you have something that you'd like everybody to participate in, you, you were saying not put it on the agenda, just bring it up at the meeting, to have it added at the meeting.
I think we just put a tweet on.
Not in advance, because we don't tend to talk about things in detail here like we do in committee.
That's right, but it's, but it wouldn't be any different than adding anything else at committee level that's.
Well, I'm not saying you can't do that too, I'm just saying, is anything wrong with in advance saying, I would like to add this to the agenda.
To who?
For a particular, for whoever puts the agenda together to send to us.
Well, that goes back to, well, if this, if this, if this is a standing, a standard item on the committee level, items for, uh, uh, interaction.
Yeah, like it is right here.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's no different than now, I mean, you're coming in here blind too.
We can always add it to the committee agenda, just add it.
That's right, that's what, that's.
I want to be specific, though, if you have a specific item, so I want everybody's input, not just the four people who are on that particular committee.
That's what the full council, that's what the full council meeting would be for, because it's still going to be a committee.
We don't discuss things here as much as we do in committee, is what I'm saying.
Well, that's right, so what?
So.
Well, that's a, that's a good thing, but don't, but.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not typically a fan of bureaucracy and, you know, additional steps, just, just to do it, but I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Stikes' comments that it does increase transparency and accountability and we like that. So perhaps we try this for a few months and see how it's working, and go back and revisit. So I understand where we're going to meet up, Mr. Mayor, is that we're going to have at each of the committees, a line item there on the agenda that just calls for new topics for the town, county interaction committee, and there'll be a conversation there at that committee, and we'll move forward to hear. Is that correct?
Anyone else? All right, we'll work on that, we'll get it straight. We'll get it straight.
Can we just vote on that? Is that a motion?
Just, just to clarify, there doesn't have to be a motion, but just that there's consensus among council that we're going to add an agenda item to each committee, starting with the August committees.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, everyone good? All right. Town manager Monday report. Any questions or comments? Anyone has anything else? If not, we are done.